Development, recreation opportunities, those impact.
And financial commitments.
And financial commitment that every city would have to have a buy-in for. And so I requested to have Mayor Julie Fulmer be the liaison directly with the legislature on this matter. She, not only is she just extremely intelligent on this, she has a city that abuts the lake, and she also recognizes the rights of cities. And she's a very good advocate. So we appointed her as the liaison, so that if we have concerns, we can take it directly.
She's the mayor of Vineyard.
Mm-hmm. As far as, let's see, where's my next thing? Emergency management. I've been working with the county quite a bit on emergency management issues. Tomorrow, I am having a meeting with the state DEM, Department of Emergency Management, Chris Hamlet and Colonel, what's his last name? Oh, my gosh, it's just on the end of my tongue. Anyways, the Colonel who's in charge. There's some things that after HB 96 last year that required every city to have an emergency manager, that can't be the fire chief and it can't be a city, the law enforcement person, because they have other duties during a disaster. I've seen some loopholes in this. So I decided, let's go to the top and see what we can do to bridge the gap, because they feel that there's a ton of resources. There's not a ton of resources, and there's a lot of cities that have problems, because that bill not only said have an emergency management, but have five different plans. Now, big cities pay somebody to write all those plans. And so I'm meeting with them tomorrow with some ideas that, after talking to a lot of other small cities, that would be helpful in training, that the state already has money for. And then I asked Peter Quitner, who is the director, the emergency management director for the county through the sheriff's office, helped us a ton during the fires. He has a plan that is to help cities. And we're going to ask for an allocation for Utah County to be on a pilot program to help smaller cities. And so I'm asking for some appropriation money during the legislative session, so that would greatly help our city and give us some funding to help us bridge that gap. So that's one thing that's going on there. And then with regards to communication board, we have been pretty good about putting a newsletter out every week. I want, our editor is here tonight. I want to give her a hand. Chloe has done a very good job. We meet, she and I meet for a few hours every week to discuss the issues in the city and how do we convey and communicate in a way that people read it and are engaged. We have, what, 75% open rate, which is almost unheard of in newsletters. We get a lot of positive feedback from residents. We try to keep it short and to the point with links if people want to read more. With that being said, we are also doing a, as part of what Doral said about Santa coming, our own Chris Helvey will be driving the fire truck, as he always does. Last year, we started something, doing a live Santa feed, and we are going to be doing that again this year. So that we've put a map out in the newsletter that shows not the stops where Santa goes, but the order of the streets, so that somebody doesn't have to wait outside in the cold forever while they're waiting for Santa. And so you can go on, you can see the order of the streets, you can then go on and see the live feed of where Santa is at the time, so you know. Because last year, it was about four hours it took Santa to get around town. And so we want to make sure citizens are aware of that. So that will also be posted on social media on that morning, so people can focus. But also, it was all given in the newsletter that went out today.
And you're working toward group stops, correct? Not every house?
Well, we said that as residents come out to their, to the street, because there isn't really any group stops anymore. We used to do it on school bus, but not every street has a school bus stop. And not every child in our town goes to school. And so they don't always know where it is. So we just said, if you have a child, and some people have grandchildren visiting, they have no clue to where the school bus stop is. I don't anymore. I'm an empty nester.
We used to know.
Yeah, we used to know. So that is, that is the thing. And then as also a part of communication, during the redistricting of the state, there was a few things that happened. We remained with our current legislators, Representative Burton and Senator McHale.
Our state.
But our, on our state reps. But our numbers have changed. So now we are in District 64 for our House, and we are in District 25 for our Senate seat. But our congressional district did change. We no longer are under Representative John Curtis. We have been placed with Representative Burgess Owens, who represents CD4. So we are in Congressional District 4. So tomorrow, before I meet with the DEM, I try to bundle my meetings when I go to Salt Lake, I am meeting with his Chief of Staff. She's flying in from Washington DC. We're going to have a meeting in the morning with her, as well as with the State Director, to talk about the issues that are affecting Woodland Hills and that we want to be engaged. We felt like we've been very engaged with, and Congressman Curtis has been very responsive to the needs of our city. And I'm going to request that Representative Burton, Burgess Owens be the same, and that requesting ahead-of-time Town Hall meetings in our city, et cetera, similar to what, and also just letting him know what some of those congressional things that come down on, is those mandates from the feds that we don't always appreciate. So those are some issues that I'm dealing with.
Thank you, Carrie. We appreciate all you do on that level for us. All right. Paul?
So 911 Special Service District, they continue to strive to overcome the growing pains of all of the new technology that's being implemented. That change is, looks like it's causing a little bit of retention issues, although there's a lot of stealing of talent by.
Poaching, yes.
Poaching from neighboring cities. There is an effort to work on quality of life issues there, so that maybe that can help with that. And they are doing lots of work to refine their processes and their systems, and so to improve their response and effectiveness.
That is a really rough, grueling job.
Yep.
Emotionally and physically, when they don't have enough people on staff to, the retention, and then that mental health issue that's going on with all of these, that's that type of service.
And they're, I think right now, they're about $20 an hour to start, and probably going to be raising that in the near future to maybe something like 22.
More than McDonald's, barely.
I hope they weigh up across the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. And there's, and you get about $25,000 worth of training in the first few months or so.
And they, and they train a lot of people that don't stay hardly at all. So we lose a lot of money.
So we're probably going to see our rates go up with them, is really what the bottom line is there. South Utah Valley Solid Waste District, the new transfer station is coming along well. We're probably going to see groundbreaking in the first quarter, maybe second quarter of next year, and looking at about an 18-month construction time. And the big thing that we're working on, the technical committee is, committee is to make sure that the building has the bones for the new technology that's going to be coming out in 20 years from now. And so that the building is designed to last 25 years, but, you know, the technology's going to change, and so there's going to be a lot of refitting in that. There were some questions on social media about recycling and how that is working. Just a reminder is that recycling is being sold, that those materials are being sold. And during the last, probably half of this year, the district has seen an actual profit on the recycling effort, which is the first time in history that they've ever had that. And so things are going well there.
Do we know where they're selling it to?
No, I don't.
Okay. Somebody asked me that question.
There is, it is not Japan, it is not China. It's somebody, probably in the United States. There is, we shared, I think, in the last newsletter or two, a new simplified recycling. What's recyclable? They're simplifying that. They're learning what they can do. So, for example, in history, it's been that pizza boxes, you couldn't recycle because the food was on there.
Grease, right.
The grease and that kind of stuff. The cardboard companies have come in and talked to us, and they say, it's not enough to worry about, so you can recycle pizza boxes. And so that new information is available to the city.
Isn't there, isn't there kind of a combination of the recycling, people that are buying this stuff are getting better at sorting and, I mean, using a variety? And they're also getting more, we're getting better technology to sort?
Sorting is important, and that, you're right, there's new technology. The process systems that they use to recycle are improving. It's just, it's a, it's a technology that is maturing to where it's, it's going to become more and more profitable. The biggest problem that they have are plastic grocery sacks. They get hung up in the sorting equipment, and to clean them out, you actually have to shut down the conveyor, and it may take an hour to clean it. And there have been times when they've only been able to run an hour and then clean for an hour. So if we can eliminate the plastic grocery sacks, we can, we can really simplify and help that process along. And we've talked about city events and volunteers.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Okay, Dave?
Okay, very quick. Finance Committee, we did not hold a meeting. We ended up with a conflict between two meetings, so that did not take place. Public Works Water, I'm really reporting on some activity in Sumois. So we held a special meeting. There is a piece of property that was originally purchased in Spanish Fork slash Springville for a regional solid waste that never got done. And so they're selling that property. And so they've got a couple of bids, they're working on those bids, and then they will be presenting them to each of the cities to approve. So that's coming. And I'm just giving you a heads-up on that. That's it.
Okay, great. For me, MAGCAG, we just had a Christmas social this month, so I've got a really new report. They're still in the middle of the, they call it the tip process, where they're evaluating all the transportation funding requests and rank them. And then the mayors will vote on them, well, the MAG will vote on them.
Treats are here.
The, and we have a trail proposal that's been, that was well-done, that was put into that pool. We don't know how it will turn out, but it, it's worth it anyway, because even if it doesn't get approved this year, we may be able to get it approved the next time around.
Have they said when they're going to announce who gets them?
Yes, but I don't remember when that is. It's a, it's a scheduled, regularly scheduled process. And so I think it's, I don't remember. If I said, I'm going to be wrong. And then SESD, they, we, so, you know, we've been in this litigation. We got a ruling this last week.
Supreme Court ruling.
Yeah, Supreme Court ruling, which is frankly, a relief, because they're competing state statutes that differed. And we've all just sort of been saying, we just need somebody to say which one is going to rule. And so they've, they've decided which one's going to rule, but now there's still some big questions about, so now the Supreme Court ruled that the cities can serve everywhere in their annexation. But there are big questions about what do, how do they reimburse SESD for areas they take over? And that has been really the big, one of the biggest bones of contention. Now, that being said, SESD is about to sign an agreement with Spanish Fork, getting everything kind of settled with them from the past. And they haven't really started working with Salem much, because, but there's, there are big problems with Payson historically. I mean, it's just been a, just a mess historically. And so, well, they're growing, and they've tried, well, and they've tried three or four times to make, so there are three or four different agreements that have, on the table that have operated at different times. And, and what do you do when somebody builds a home in Payson, but Payson doesn't have good access to that? So it's going to cost their city hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to get electricity to that home, so then they want SESD to serve it. And so then there are a couple places where SESD's done that for like 15 years. And so now Payson is ready to take it over, and they're saying they've, they've paid SESD for those, for all their, taking over the, you know, paid them for that service 15 years ago, but SESD's been maintaining and updating. And so there's just, there are just a lot of messy things between them that they're going to still have to work out.
So, look.
And there are hard costs and soft costs, and so.
Right.
So two years ago, when this was going on, I made a comment, and I think it's even more valid today. And that is that SESD needs to think about what do they look like as an organization when South Utah County is more or less built out? You know, they're no longer a rural.
Grigianus.
Yeah, I mean, you're, so, you know, whomever ends up on the SESD board, my recommendation would be that they deliver an extremely strong message to SESD, that they have to have a 20-year plan in place, and what do they look like? And then quit fighting. It's just, this whole fight's been stupid. And they just need to realize that the world's changing, South Utah County's changing, cities are going to take up all that county space, so they should just plan for it.
Well, and they're, and they are trying to do that, but they're trying in the process to protect you and.
I hear that, but, but I would say the same thing to us.
Right.
What do we look like when we no longer have any county land around us? What do we as a city, where do we get our electricity from?
And what are our rates?
And what are our rates?
Well, but.
Who's the company that we use?
And there is the challenge between now and then of what do we do about the seven guys way over in West Mountain that the state makes us serve until it becomes, you know what I mean?
Now you're talking SESD. I don't care about the people in, seven people in West Mountain.
No, but, but, okay, yes, it's, okay, right. So you're saying, assuming that we are no longer associated with SESD?
I'm, I'm, I'm saying, those are decisions that we have, it's inevitable. The wave is coming. We need to have a plan.
Right.
Both as a city, and then I'm encouraging that SESD also have that plan.
Right.
Well, and part of it is that SESD technically is just a power broker for us. They buy the power somewhere else, they supply it to us, they maintain it. At some point, we may want to be our own broker and cut out that middleman. The, the problem that we have, we could do that right now, probably, but we don't have the ability to pay staff to maintain it. And so I think that's, that's really one of the reasons.
And there is some question about whether legally we can pull out or not.
Well, we don't have a contract with them, but we do have some other things in place that we could, over the course of time, you know, break ties with them, especially if we give them whatever notice. The other thing that I was wondering about then, if, since this court ruling happened, and those who are currently served by SESD, they count on that revenue, now they will be incorporated, whether they want to as a homeowner or not, be incorporated into the city that annexes them. That's less revenue for SESD. That does have a financial impact on us, because their operating costs will still be there. And so I'm a little, I'm really wondering how this decision will impact us financially.
That, that actually isn't.
Totally correct?
It's, yeah. It's, it's not that, that's not that dire, but the problem is, when you get an area that comes in, and we've had to, SESD has had to provide not just the wires in that area, you know, we can get, we can get reimbursed for the wires and the transformers, but what about the power station that we had to put in because we were serving these customers? And, you know, what's the share of that? Also, SESD is, was applying for a bond, because we've got to, you know, improve the system, because it's dated and old. And we're having a hard time, SESD's having a hard time getting a bond because of the people, yeah. The people issue.
I think, I think the point that we have to be focused on, and using the example of Dave and yours of the seven people in West Mountain, that is not our problem, that's SESD's problem. We need to focus on the City of Woodland Hills problem, whether it's the revenue that may, the rates that may go, go up, or.
Right.
Uh, dated equipment, because they can't get bonds or whatever. We have to make sure that we focus on our citizens and let SESD work their problems.
And we're one, one voice at that table. Remind us, how many people sit on the board?
I think there's seven of us.
We are, but I'm, I mean, I'm betting Elk Ridge feels the same way.
Yeah.
They do.
And worse, because they have three times the population and still the same voice.
Again, I, I have not really been a fan of how SESD has approached the last probably three, four years of their existence. And I think as a city, it's in our interest to make sure they know that.
Right, because we're their two largest clients.
We need to make sure that we're collaborating with Elk Ridge. We know what their plan is, they, they know what our plan is, and hopefully, the plans will, will join somewhere in the middle.
Well, and they do have, they have a franchise agreement with SESD that we do not.
But the two ma, the two new mayors, because they have a new mayor and we have a new mayor, should be able to, you know, think about that, but I'm glad we didn't sign something.
We just need to talk and make sure that we're working together. And so that actions that either city takes are not a surprise to the other city.
Right, right. I think that's a good point. Okay, so anything else that you need to bring up in our work session before we go tonight? You know, actually, I want to have a quick report from Paul or Dave, or both of you, on the development agreement with Summit Creek. Just where we are, where we stand.
So this has been, what, a two-month process now? We've gone, we've, we've met with Summit Creek for about every week for the better part of, last part of October, first part of November. We brought up many issues. They took a lot of notes. Their lawyer came back with an additional draft that fixed some of the issues. Still had a few issues, so we've given them kind of that list. And then we've engaged and had meetings with Craig and Ethan, our lawyers, and they're going to start working on it from what I would say, a legal language perspective. So the meeting that we had with them gave them kind of some of our ideas, but they weren't using legalese, and we all know lawyers speak different. So, anyway, sorry, Paul. Anyway, so we're, so we're in the process of getting Craig and Ethan involved. I did just have a chat with Ben, and I'm going to send an email to Steve, Ben, and Bucky, because I feel like in the last week, we've kind of gotten off the rails with some of the approach, so hopefully, we can get back on the rails and, and get something. I still think, at best, we're looking sometime in January.
Okay.
I have one thing that I forgot to put in the newsletter.
Wait a minute, did you have anything you want to add to that?
No.
Okay.
But Doral, I'm going to direct this at you. I was contacted by a business in Spanish Fork, it's called The Fellas Chop Shop. It's a barber on Main Street, 162 North Main Street, and they are giving free haircuts to all firefighters until December 30th. And, but what?
No firefighters.
No, I just texted them and said, family members, EMS, whatever. They said, no, just firefighters. So I said, so I don't know if you have to call and get an appointment, but I would like to give you their phone number, 801-798-4631. And if you have to make an appointment to get that haircut, but I would like you to be able to send out a notice to all the fire department to let them know that that's available. Did you get the address?
Yes.
162 North Main. Yeah, Spanish Fork.
I know where that is.
Yeah. So I wanted to publicly thank them for honoring our firefighters and extending that to, not just to the Spanish Fork firefighters, but to all firefighters.
Yeah, making the effort.
Thank you.
Including us. Great. All right, we can, we can close our work session. Do you guys need five minutes, or do you want to just move right into our meeting?
We're sitting at almost 10 minutes to 10.
Let's go for it.
Okay.
So just.
All right, then I will, Jody, do you need to stop the recording in between meetings? Nobody feels a need for an executive session, right? Okay, just checking to make sure.
Let's look at the three characters again, just to be sure.
Characters, huh?
Yes. You're the one who referred to them, that's why, that's why I said it that way.
So are these gifts to pass around?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, I was wondering if they were all for me.
Okay, I'm Mayor Wendy Prey. I'm calling to order the city council meeting for the City Council of Woodland Hills. It's Tuesday, December 14th, 2021. We've just completed our work session. It was long, but productive and good. I would like to ask, our full council is in attendance tonight, and I would like to ask Councilmember Ottley, whose resignation is effective tomorrow, to lead us in the pledge one last time. And Councilmember MacArthur, would you be willing to offer an invocation?
For the last part.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we're grateful to be together tonight as a city. We're grateful for the good people that live here, beautiful surroundings that we have. We're grateful for this rain and snow that we're receiving, and ask that those who are traveling in it can be safe. Father, bless us with thy spirit tonight as we make decisions, help us to consider all that we should consider when we're making these important decisions. Help us to listen to the citizens, help us to understand the law as it applies to the decisions that we're making. We're so grateful for these three great men who are willing to step up to take Councilmember Ottley's position and ask that they can feel our appreciation for who they are and what they're offering to the council. Again, we're grateful for all that we have, and we ask and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bob and Paul. All right, we have time for some public comment. If there's anybody that wants to make public comment, we ask that you keep your comments to two minutes, and anything emailed will be put in the public record, but I don't think we got anything this time emailed, did we?
Oh, is that a hand?
Okay, Steve Dickert, would you like to make some public comment? Oh, Bucky, are you going to make, are you going to be, are you going to play the role of Steve?
Steve, can I go first? I don't, I'm not sure what's going on.
They both have.
He's backing up.
Yeah, just in case Steve doesn't comment. You there, Steve?
I'm muting. We can.
I'm muting. We can't hear you, Steve. It's past your bedtime.
Past mine, just let Bucky.
Oh, yeah, we have someone here.
Ben's here.
Here's Ben. Okay, Ben. We just need you to take a mic.
Ben Brynlee and I work with the Summit Creek Development. Uh, first, I guess since this is probably the last chance, Mayor Prey and, and Paul and, uh, Bob, best of luck on your future endeavors. We appreciate all the work you guys have done to help the, our development. Um, regarding the development agreement, thank you for, uh, putting that into the agenda there last minute. I appreciate you guys taking a minute to do the update. I admittedly have been a bit of a pest the last couple of months is email after email. Cause it's super important for us, this development agreement is our top priority right now, it's, it's number one. Um, and along with you, we've worked really hard on it, we made great progress, we're to a point where we feel like we're getting really close. With that being said, when we started the process, the agreement was that we would get it done by the end of the year. And that's our hope, is that I know it's late in the year, but we really would like to try and get this in by the end of the year. Our fear is that if it continues to move forward, it just gets, kind of gets, keep getting pushed. With the new mayor coming in, the new council members, there's a opportunity to maybe lose some momentum or who knows what. And so, uh, respectfully, we would ask the council, I mean, I'll even come to your house Christmas morning, I'll bring gifts. And we'll, although that's probably bribing, I can't do that. But we're prepared to do whatever it takes to get this done by the end of the year. So, uh, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Okay, Steve, did you get on?
I did, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, great. So, uh, uh, you know, I, I think it may be a little bit redundant, but, uh, my belief is if we can get the parties in a room and the city's legal counsel has reviewed it, we can get this done in less than a day. I don't think we are at odds on, you know, you know, relatively anything. I think we just need the attorneys sitting across from each other with the parties to coordinate on some language. I don't think we're, you know, far apart on, you know, many of the issues at all. I'm really concerned that we will have, um, potentially two new members of the city council and a new mayor that have not participated in the process over the last, you know, you know, decade, for lack of a better term, and understand the issues related to the importance of the getting the development agreement done. My concern is that we pushed this into January as Councilman Pratt has, you know, suggested, I think brings grave concern to us. So as Ben had said, you know, I'm willing to show up wherever it is, whenever it is, if that means that I need to be at Dave's house on Christmas morning to open gifts with him so that then we can go through the development agreement. I'm glad to, I'm glad to do that. And I'm, so I, I think whatever we can do to, to facilitate this before the end of the year, we'll make sure that it happens. I just want to make sure that we're trying to meet the commitment that the city council had made back in October, so, um, while there've been hiccups and it may be tough, I think we can still get it done and I would appreciate any effort that the city council and the, and the mayor can, uh, do to get that over the goal line for the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Can I say a couple of words, Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'd just like to echo what they said and I too appreciate the time and effort that Paul and Dave and Wayne have put into this. And I personally have been trying to resolve this issue for, I don't even know how many years now with the current city council, the current mayor. And it would be just very disheartening to us if we can't resolve this by the end of the year and have to take steps backwards with, with just the changes that are coming. And, uh, I spoke with our attorney yesterday and he said, "Not that far apart." If we can just work with them and their attorney together, I, I just don't see why we can't get this knocked out this year. And we're committed to it, I'd be more than happy to bring presents to somebody's house Christmas morning as well. So, again, thank you all for helping us and we just request that you can help us get this done by the end of the year.
I, I, generally we don't comment back, but I think, um, if we can get the attorneys together, that'll go a long way. And then I also think, I, I think our council would be willing to get together as long as we're, we've got something to actually vote on and do accomplish. We're not gonna get together just to, I don't think they're willing to get together just to talk about things, but I don't think that's what you're suggesting either, so let's try and get that.
Mayor, one, one, just one other comment if I may. I, as a, as a parting gift, right, and a welcome gift to the new mayor and the new city council, I don't know that that's a good gift to be leaving, is, is an in-process development agreement. So, it, to the extent that we can facilitate this and, and get it done, you know, we're, we're, we're glad to help so that we're le, we're leaving the new city council with issues that you guys have talked about previously that are probably of larger concern to them, um, without an administrative manner of the development agreement. That's just my thought, so.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Paul.
Paul, um, so it's my understanding that our attorney received the latest iteration on Monday. Uh, so a couple, uh, yesterday, yep. Okay, so I know he's, hopefully he's, you know, starting to work on that. There's still some, I think the reason that, that maybe, Dave, I'm putting words in your mouth, so tell me if I'm wrong, but I think maybe the reason that Dave has been hesitant to say we could do it this month and, and why I didn't change it is because we still, in our minds, have some fairly significant issues that haven't been addressed. Now, maybe that our attorney comes back to us Thursday and says, "We got it, here's what we're gonna do, there's, you know, here's the explanation." And we say, "Oh, great," but at this point, they're big issues and they're unanswered from our perspective, and that's where the hesitancy with Ben and Steve and Buck, I think that's the hesitancy on my part is to say, "We just don't know yet." Uh, it, it could be by, by the end of December. Um, we're kind of waiting to get the next step from our attorney to say what your attorney maybe said to you, which is, "Oh, we're getting close, just, you know, we, we can get together in a room for a couple of hours, work out some language issues." I'd love it if, if Craig or Ethan came back and said, "I just don't know yet," because he hasn't had the time to review that, that last draft to give us any advice. So that's where I'm coming from, Dave, I don't know how you feel about it, but.
Yeah, it's very similar, I, both, I mean, I, like I said, Ben and I had this conversation out in the hallway in our break. I'm very, very willing to meet and take a vote next week. But if it's not next week, I'm gone the next week. And so it, it just doesn't work. I mean, so that's what we're up against. It's not, it's not a matter of me saying, "I'm not willing to do this" or "I'm not willing to help." It, it literally is, "I'm just looking at the clock." And it's running out of time and we still don't have the language that we asked for in the agreement. And that, and so the alternative is that we have our lawyer draw up a different piece of paper with a different agreement that has our language in it, and then we go through reconciliation. But to do that within a week isn't really possible, so if we're going to get moving, we have got to have a document that has the language we need and we need to be able to look at it and say, "Yep, we can meet next week and we can vote." That's what has to happen.
And, and David, th, this is, this is my understanding. The document that was sent out on Monday was a response to Wayne's comments that were received. It should have gone through your legal counsel, right? Your, your legal counsel has had that document for a long time, the original one that we sent. The response to, to Wayne's comments should go through your legal counsel. Turn the document back to us with that change, this is the way normal, you know, normal course works, I mean, Paul knows this very well. That you guys have had the pen for a long time. Turn the document, we can sit down with you, put the language in you want, and literally, I think in a half a day, we'll have it done.
Well, what, uh, there's some truth to what you're saying and then there's also not. So, why don't, why don't we have this discussion later, uh, not as part of our council meeting? Uh, you're welcome to, you're welcome to call me tomorrow and we can talk about it.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to figure out a way to, to facilitate it so that, you know, if the city attorney knows that the deadline is to try to get it done by the end of the year or earlier, my guess is, like most attorneys, they will push to get it done because that's what their client is asking them to do. I just think they need some instruction in, in order to help do that, so. Anyhow, thanks for your, for your help on that.
All right, thanks. All right, we've got to move on because that was like very irregular public comment. All right, um, but needed to happen. We're to the consent agenda. Got approval of the November 9th meeting minutes, the 16th meeting minutes, and an approval, approval of the employee handbook as it so stands. Okay. Okay. We can recover those, but, okay. So did you hear that? They, they're putting timestamps in. Excellently deleted some of the minutes for the November 9th, so we're taking that one out.
So I make a motion that we approve November 16th and the employee handbook as part of the consent agenda and not November 9th.
And I will second that, saying that the mayor is to blame for a great, great employee handbook.
Well, it's not done, but.
But it's a start.
Yes, perfect. Thank you. All right, I have a motion from Pratt and a second from Kenniston. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And sorry, Jody, good luck getting those minutes fixed. That's fun, fun, fun. All right, to business and discussion issues, we've got the resolution adopting our September 2021 check dispersments. You guys saw those?
So I make a motion that we approve, um.
It's a resolution, we need to pass the resolution. Okay.
That's the check, Rupert. For general fund, capital fund, and water supply.
Okay, so Dave, sorry.
I make a motion that we approve September 21st and October 21st resolution for check dis, dispersments.
Second.
Okay, I have a. We have to do two separate.
Okay, then.
So, so we'll do the 20.
I modify for September 2021.
Dash 13 for September 2021 and Paul seconds. Any further question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will. Sign that, pass it around. Now, do we have a motion for 2021 dash 14? This is for October, the October 2021. 15? We just did 13. You said. Okay.
So I move to approve that resolution.
Okay, I have a motion from MacArthur and a second from Ottley. Oh, Mal, oh yes, Malkovich, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will pass this one around. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is the rezon request for 80 West Valley View.
We didn't have a discussion about this.
No, we didn't.
I know, we didn't. Um, Jody, do you want to?
So let me previously go back two meetings ago into October when Bruce Flannery came.
At that time, the property has exchanged hands and has been purchased by this other individual that I, I've mentioned.
It's okay.
Nate Crowe. Nate Crowe. Mr. Crowe came in, he's the quietest with all the documentation needed
He's online.
To move it forward and, um, since we've already made the motion to go ahead, I do not include it in the, um, business or the work session because formality was already taken care of, but I did want to let you know that this had exchanged hands and that you could formally send it forward with Nate instead of. Do back to the planning commission.
Yes.
Okay, so that makes more sense because I was looking at it thinking, we had somebody else say it before and this is a new name and.
Yeah, so it's.
Wasn't on our discussion, so.
So we're just sending it back to the planning commission?
Yeah, we're just sending it to the planning commission because it's different people.
Okay. Then I make a motion that we, uh, send the, send item number 12 to the planning commission, second.
Okay, I have a motion from Pratt and a second from MacArthur. Any questions or discussion on that? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, the next, make sure I keep my papers in order. Number 13 is the ordinance establishing a time and place to hold the 2012 city council meetings.
2020, 2022.
Yeah, sorry, 2022. I just lost 10 years.
We accept this schedule as proposed.
I second it.
Okay, this will be ordinance 2021. Dash 29. Okay, I have a motion from Malkovich and a second from Ottley. You've got a lot of nerve. I'm just kidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With all my nerve.
Oh, we need a roll call vote on this because it's an ordinance? Okay, Malkovich.
Um, yes.
Uh, MacArthur.
Yes.
Uh, Kenniston.
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ottley?
Aye, but I won't be here.
All right, thank you all.
Mayor, you read that as a 2021, but it's 2022, isn't it?
No, it's, it's, we pass it this, this year, so it's still 2021 ordinance.
Are we not on fiscal years and ordinances, Jody? Sorry, I must be off on that.
All right, um, number 14, the ordinance adopting city code 10-17-1 accessory dwelling units.
I move that we table that until we can get our two questions answered.
I second that.
Okay, so I have a motion from Pratt to table and a second from Ottley.
Can I ask that members of this council read House Bill 82? I have read it, I promise to read it again, there's, it's only 1,500 lines, you could easily do it. But we have to read each line three times, but anyway, yeah, please do it. There's a lot in there that we're governed by, that don't need to be in our ordinance, okay? It's loaded.
Okay, HB 82?
HB 82.
Thanks.
If you don't, if you need a copy of it, I've got it in plain text. Well, I hope there is.
Hey, I have a motion and a second to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, uh, number 15, the ordinance adopting a fencing standard for the R119 zone.
Planning Commission, 100% on that?
Yes.
Unanimous.
I move that we adopt that. We can vote and see what happens.
Any other discussion or questions on that before we vote? Okay, I have a motion from Kenniston and a second from MacArthur to adopt this change. Dash 30, okay, 2021 dash 30, let me. One, sorry.
I like it, stay that way. Because I'll need your help on ADUs. Good, you're my friend.
I don't have, I don't have a copy of that one. Oh, wait, I found it. Here we go, sorry. 2021 dash 30? Sorry, Jody, okay. All right. Roll call, Ottley.
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Kenniston?
Yes.
Okay, MacArthur?
Yes.
Malkovich?
Yes.
Okay.
Whoa.
That ordinance passes. I will pass this around. Um, thank you, Wayne, for you guys, uh, planning commission has did, has done a lot of work. Thank you, Wayne, for, you guys, Planning Commission has done a lot of work on this and put a lot of effort into that, and it can be revisited if, if we need to.
And that's not as hard as the last one on the agenda.
All right, and the last item on the agenda is appointing an individual to fill the unexpired term. So this is two years, right, Bob?
Two years and a month.
And then, and that's your regular term?
That's correct.
So...
Further questions, right?
I, I have a clarifying question to, to Rod. You talked about the, the seat being dedicated. Can you help me understand a little bit more how, how narrow or how broad that dedication really is? Yeah. Are, are we going to be able to use you for anything else other than that?
I, I would say no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
At the same time I'm saying that, I can imagine in circumstances where another council member, another voice, additional arms in place, but largely by the thought is, is...
Just to be really honest, that, that concerns me in that basically puts us one council member down, and so that, that is, that's a concern I have.
Yeah, that, that brings up a valid point. We all have a city responsibility, or two, or three, plus we have two or three in county, so how would you then think the rest of the four of us would assimilate whatever that council position would do? We're already stretched.
I, I don't think that's in his purview to answer. I, that's the mayor's.
But that, I mean, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, right, a legitimate question, because I don't, I don't know how any of us could add one more...
That's my...
Or two more, because each of us have two or three things that we do.
That's my concern.
No.
I, can I make a, can I make a public comment?
Yeah.
And, and this comes out difficult for me to word perfectly, because I really like all three of these gentlemen. But I would like to take the case of Ben Hilliard as, as one of my favorites, simply because he has dedicated so much time in the last several months, actually, campaigning and striving to do what he thinks is best for the city. And, and, and that's a lot of time and effort. I witnessed the employee evaluations he did live and recorded and posted. Incredibly well done. Things like that, that proved willingness to, to just jump in with both feet, and, and he's not retired, and I'm sure it's going to take time for him to do these things that we all love to do. So I personally would favor Ben for that reason alone, and, and I'm interested in everybody else's view too, and I would be happy, very happy with any of the three. Let me say that, too.
How, how are we going to do this vote?
It's public, it's public.
Well, no, I get that, I get that.
Somebody will...
Make a motion.
Well, no, no, I think we will, I think we'll do... We don't do ranked voting?
I have a question for the council that will be remain, which is for three of us then to assimilate, I mean, if we, if we choose Rod, then he would assimilate, and we would put a bunch of stuff on agenda, too.
Yeah.
Those extra roles that, that Rod would not be assigned to. One of the questions I have as well is, as a council, then are, are we willing to, to do that? And if, if not, we have seen, as to Paul's comment earlier, that we have had some appointed positions to do specific tasks. And Rod, I, I, I don't know if maybe that's the route we go with, with system management is an appointed position of dedicated just to that, or if we want the city council position to be dedicated to that, because either ones are called dedicated responsibilities. So now, Rod is here, and, and he also brings some things to the table that have nothing to do with what the two of them kind of have, that mutual platform. He brings something else to the table that is of value, with his experience, of course, in budgeting and, and, and management styles. So I just wanted to put that out there on what are our options for using three very qualified people for different reasons in the city and dedicating, which one actually is, is dedicated to the responsibilities of a council member?
I'm not, I'm not one of the three.
It's hard to replace one, we're saying.
Yeah, right. What, one of the, one of the concerns I have about that is how do we, or can we, and maybe, maybe it's just my lack of understanding, can, can we give those people, and I don't know what we're calling those positions, can, can we give them enough authority to function? In other words, is, is this an appointed position versus the council position? Obviously, a different level of, of influence and of authority. How is, can we balance that out somehow? Or can't we? I don't know.
Well, look at what we did before. We had, we wrote descriptions and whatnot for all of the committees that we put into place with those metrics in place. I mean, finance committee, very dedicated to a certain task with outcome, right? I think that it's possible for other...
But, but, but didn't we also include in those descriptions that they had no authority to act?
Well, yes, of course, but they can have the ability, which is what we talked about earlier, I don't remember who brought it up, that, and in advisory capacities to get things done, and if, if it's an assignment, too, that's dedicated administratively, which these two are have asked, that would be almost a special assistant to the mayor.
If you were going to, if the council is going to ask one of them to take an assignment like that, we need to look at what happened with Rod before, when he came in with a really good proposal, and we really liked it, and just... And it ju- yeah, and so they've got to be able to be empowered to run with it, and I think that's kind of what you're...
Yeah, influence and authority to, to, to do things, and...
Authority to act, but not necessarily to make decisions on the city's behalf.
That's right.
So that's what...
But, but make, so it's more important, the level of influence that you have. A council member has a, a very defined level of influence. Someone that's appointed, I'm not so sure that they do.
Can I, can I make a, just a real quick comment? I think we're discussing matters that are honestly under the purview of the mayor. The mayor is the one who assigns all of us. So we really don't need to worry about that particular aspect.
Right.
Mayor, Mayor Winder may choose to assign a person to do, you know, systems work, or he may choose to have them do sumo. That's up to the mayor. And so I guess, I guess what I'm trying to, my, my concern, and I, it kind of echoes what Carrie and Bob are saying, is I don't know that it's a good position to come into being a council member and saying, I'll be a council member if I get this particular job.
Especially if the, if Mayor Winder-elect is not here to throw in his support for, or...
Even though that might be the area where you have the most strengths, I get that.
Right.
But still, my goodness, who, who handles it when a president complains about their water? Or who handles it when the sewer backs up? Or who handles it when the trash cans are blown across the road? You know, you can't just say, you can't say, "Not it."
He's gone, he's gone. He already nodded it.
Jody already gets that.
That's, that's part of the job, is to take those phone calls.
And there's some differences to an executive level and legislative level, right? And there's some different roles that are only happening, so I don't want that they can be combined, as well as coming, and be, coming, have to be separated for separation purposes.
But again, keep in mind, with a five-person, a five-person council, a single mayor, it is not an executive versus legislative. We don't have different branches. No, we don't.
We don't manage, yeah, different functions, we don't manage at all, and we don't talk about...
We don't manage the employees, but we do manage a lot of things.
So I, I think the way to, to address this is to follow Dave's thought process, and that is to allow the mayor to decide. The mayor can appoint somebody to report directly to them, and then the mayor would represent that opinion to the council. And I think that, depending on the level of commitment that the mayor has for that, then that addresses a lot of the potential.
And we're speaking at a turn here.
I mean, because we approved all of the heads of all the committees as a council...
But they were council committees, they were not, they were not mayor committees.
I was assigned to sumo...
No, I'm talking about finance committee.
I was, I was assigned that, too.
Right.
And you didn't vote on it.
The committee for people, the committee chair is, was approved by us.
That is correct.
And that's what we...
That's a specific committee.
This is a specific committee that's going to handle the functions, because both of those two want to do same function, I mean, city systems replacement, would that be a new committee?
Again, that's, that's for the mayor.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
A nomination, you want to nominate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please, please.
This is a totally different issue, but I want it to come up before we do anything.
Okay.
So Ben, this is actually directed at you. Take it for what it will, but as, as somebody who had a young family when I got on, as I look back now, my regrets are that I wasn't able to get to, to things and do things that I would have been able to do had I been retired. And yet, at the same time, I have deep regrets that my children have suffered for the time that I have taken away from them when they needed me to do things with the city. And so I have regrets on both sides. I've said several times throughout this last six years that, you know, is it a requirement to be on the council if you're, you're retired, so you have time? I don't think it is, but man, it's a difference maker. So I, I, I mean, you've got to make that decision, but, and, and I don't regret my time, but it has been, when I, when I'm alone, when I'm alone with my thoughts at night, I have regret for what it, for, for the opportunities I've missed with my children, and when they needed me and I wasn't there. And then I also forget, like, I look at Rod, he and I met for three hours early on in that process, and he has great ideas, and I failed him, because I just didn't have time. I did not have time to pick it up and go with all the other things, and I regret that, because the city could be way better off had I had time to, to follow through with that. So I'm just being absolutely blunt and honest about it, I have tremendous regrets because I didn't have time, there's only twenty-four hours in a day, and four hours of sleep is what I get right now, and I couldn't go lower than that. So, so just be aware of that, 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 it's a big, it is a big commitment.
Well, and I also have, I have some concerns as I'm leaving my office, that we've got a citizenry that has some unrealistic expectations of a volunteer council and a volunteer mayor. And it's great for people that are retired to be able to spend that time, but is that the pool we want to just go from? You know, or do we want to have reasonable expectations on citizens that have, still have families, that can still have a life, because this isn't their job, it's, it's a volunteer service they're providing? So we need to, I mean, that needs to be evaluated, too.
So Paul, that was really important, what you said. Do the, do you candidates feel any differently about your offering to the city? Because that's very important, what you said.
Right.
True, absolutely.
And while, because you have a life, you know, you can spend the time it takes, that's just the word, right? We don't want to cut you out because we're guessing that I don't want to...
Right, right. Yeah, it's not...
This is just more of my, my feelings, a, a warning, or not a warning, but, yeah, I did...
It's the truth.
I didn't mean to say that that means that Ben is a different candidate.
No.
Because of that. Nor, nor the other two. You know, they're retired, you still have families, you still have obligations and all.
Well, and, and I, I just want to make one last comment. I think honestly, we're, we're over analyzing things.
Yes.
Our job as a council is to select the best person. Let the mayor do their job, let the candidate who is selected to do their job. Now, here's the hard part, we've been given three very good candidates, but still, I think our vote should represent, ignore all the other factors, it should just be who's the best person for this position.
Well, and I think, too, we have to consider if they each feel that they, I mean, you can hear a long time tonight, and this is just an averaging, right? So I would like to know and hear that you understand the realistic expectation that it's not just two Tuesdays a, a month, that it is an everyday job, that takes a variety of time, depending on which assignments the mayor gives you. And are you all ready, knowing that you're giving the time? Do you feel comfortable with the time? So just go up and down the line, tell us, because I think that's important for you to know and for us to know.
Well, I don't think we need to have them throw their, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think they've already expressed commitment, if they've got a problem, they'll...
I don't think we should try to micromanage their opinion.
Exactly.
Go ahead.
There is, there is, there is a lot of time. I mean, I was just doing, kind of doing some looking. I'm on seven different committees slash boards, and typically, they meet once a month. One of them, when things get hot and heavy, they meet twice a month. Though, you know, we're, we're planning a, a thirty million dollar transfer station. And so it, it does take a lot of time. At the same time, I can remember, and this is interjecting a little bit of church in here, but I can remember for about three years, I left my home on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at six o'clock in the morning, and I returned between eleven o'clock and midnight every day. I was gone one Saturday, all day, every month, and I was gone from five o'clock in the morning on Sunday to about seven o'clock at night. And I, and I had six little kids, and I made sacrifices, and one of them is not happy with my sacrifices. So that's your call, that's your decision. So, you know, almost, I'd almost rather put three names in a hat and pull one out, but I'm going to, I'm going to make a nomination to move this animal into the pen, if you will, with a hot shot, probably. I, I nominate Ben Hilliard as, as the council replacement for Bob Ottley.
Okay, I have a nomination.
And your term ends in two more years.
And so do I have a second on that nomination?
One second.
Okay, so is there anyone else who wants to make a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Rod Man.
Okay, so we've got, do I have a second on that nomination?
It's easier for me to second all three.
Now, if you want to go around and have each person nominate any of the four, then...
And that would decide it, maybe.
It's not a motion, though, it's a nomination.
It's a nomination and a second. It was a... It was a nomination, I meant to say that, I did intend to say nomination.
Just being clear.
So we don't have to second a nomination?
Oh, okay. So, sorry, my bad on the seconding. So we have a nomination right now for Ben Hilliard, and then we, from, uh, Kiniston, and we have a nomination for, um, Rod Mun from Pratt.
I'll nominate Jeff Berger, I think all three of them might be considered.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, nomination from Paul, for Jeff Berger.
Let, let, let's make this easy. So we're going from three to three. Now, there was this Peterson guy that.
Okay. Well, I just say we'll go around and, and each of you just say their name, and then we will take the highest two and.
You know.
It, it, the highest one, if it's unanimous, the highest two, and then the. Well, yeah. And then, um, and we'll go around again if we need to.
So what are we doing now?
So, so we've got, all three of them are nominated. And so I'm just gonna go around and get each of your votes, and then we'll, okay, so just a minute, let me. All right. Kiniston.
Ben Hilliard.
Okay, Kiniston votes Hilliard. Okay, Pratt?
Uh, Rod Mun.
Okay. Ottley?
Hard.
I, I could make this really difficult. Ben?
Okay. Carrie?
This is really hard, it really is, because you are all, I consider all of you friends.
And you hope to stay friends? By nominating somebody, they're not gonna like you in three months.
This is Sophie's choice.
Yeah, Sophie's choice is exactly. But given this, I still think that we have the opportunity to lobby the mayor and the elect for some other positions. And given that the council takes a variety of roles, um, more than one dedicated role, I put my vote to back.
And, and just a side note, I've been in your seat twice.
Yes.
And I wasn't selected either. So I went to the citizen.
Okay.
So remember, two years.
So that gives a, a three, but, uh, okay. So long as you're, they'll let you sit there.
I'm not as good a person as you, Paul.
Oh.
I'm not out in Haiti, I'm not out in taking the old people, and I'm not running along for a minute, so.
And Jeff, we, we still all like you two very much. Okay, so we've got four votes for Hilliard, and so.
It's not an easy, not easy.
He didn't switch, he just.
He never voted, he just.
He just nominated, but.
I have to be out at 6:00 in the morning plowing snow.
Well, we'll get you out of here by then.
It's a blizzard up here on Deep Forest Circle right now.
All right. Okay, so Ben, congratulations, and again, Jeff, thank you, and, and Rod. We really appreciate it and hope that you will be involved still because you have a lot to contribute.
And so I would ask you two to reach out to the, to Mayor-elect and volunteer yourself. And see if there's some kind of thing you guys can agree upon that uses your talent.
And speaking as a mayor, um, at least I was so, I've been so overwhelmed sometimes with other things that I need somebody to stay, "I'm still here, I'm still willing, I'm still." You know, the fact that I'm not always responding right away doesn't mean I'm, I haven't been interested or willing. I just, somebody else is yelling louder or hitting me harder.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, wait.
Taking office, the upper office, so he would take the upper office on January 11th.
Good.
And council needs to know you are down then a person, which means if you're going to do a development agreement between now and the end of the year, you need to have a majority vote on that.
No, three, well, three still need to vote. Three, three need to vote, yes, or whatever.
And there may be some solid waste stuff that needs to be addressed.
That's just a load of crap.
Because of.
I have to leave with one more. Okay, all right. Well, and if I, I mean, that's, I'll have to be the tiebreaker if there's a problem.
These are, um, box treats.
Wait, we, we moved to adjourn, right?
I'll second that.
Okay, now, thank you, Bob. Thank you all. It's been a great year. It's been a wow year.
You like the snowfallings at first time?
Would your, your patient, next time he meets, in January?
11th. I'm going home to eat my last.
Are you sure?